Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town Council meeting for December 3rd, 2019. Please rise. Counselors here, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call a roll.
Counsel Ringman.
Who?
Counsel Callum.
Present.
Counsel Christopher.
Yeah.
Counsel Boncory.
Yes.
Counsel Farino.
Yes.
Counsel DiMarco.
Here.
Counsel LaConti.
Present.
Vice President LaTieri.
Yes.
President Beckham.
Present.
Entertainer motion to approve the minutes of the November 19th, 2019.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. General information and recommendations? None. Public hearing, we have six of them this evening. The first one, I will open at this point in time. The town maintains a uniform tax rate for all classes of property for fiscal 2020, and authorized Town Manager Faizan to sign and electronically submit the LA-5 to the Department of Revenue. This evening, we have Deputy Assessor Steve Roach here to give us a background.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President and members of the council. As you know, as you stated, the purposes of this hearing is to establish a tax levy percentage and minimum residential factor. To review how the proposed tax rate was developed. This is an interim year. We're now on the five-year municipal modernization act. That's the schedule for our rebalance, so it is another interim year with adjustments to values based upon 2018 sales. The interim year adjustment form has been reviewed and approved by the Department of Revenue. Based upon the sales from 2018, the average single-family value is $498,025. This represents a 6.8% increase in value, that's the word, in single families. The average single-family tax bill would be $6,285, which represents a 2% increase, or $140 across the board on average. The proposed tax rate of $12.62, and this is pending DOR approval, is a 56-cent decrease from last year's rate of $13.18 per thousand dollars of value. New growth continues to be strong, with new growth assessed value of $17,600,000, and new growth tax dollars to the town of $232,000. Growth continues to be mostly condo conversions, with some new construction and combined smaller projects. The building permit applications to date have been steady and projected to be healthy this year again. The memo has been circulated to the council by the Board of Assessors recommending that the uniform tax rate be retained for FY '20. Thank you.
Any questions from the councils? Any questions from the public? Hearing none, I'll close out that public hearing. Do you want to take a vote on that now?
Can do it now.
All right. I will entertain a motion to accept.
Motion.
Motion?
Second motion to accept.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, do we need a roll call on this?
You should take it.
Okay.
Counsel Ringman. Counsel Callum.
Yes.
Counsel Christopher.
Yes.
Counsel Boncory.
Yes.
Counsel Farino.
Yes.
Counsel DiMarco.
Yes.
Counsel LaConti.
Yes.
Vice President LaTieri.
Yes.
President Beckham.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counsel.
Second public hearing. The Town Council to vote to transfer $1,174,614.18 from free cash to the Capital Stabilization Fund. Anyone wish to be heard?
Counsel President.
Counsel LaTieri.
Finance Committee met this evening. We had multiple items on the agenda. This was one of them. This is a financial policy that the council enacted about eight or nine years ago. This amount signifies 40% of free cash. It also signifies a little bit over that because the building stabilization policy that we have is capped at, it's either 10% or capped at $300,000. Any overage of that would go to capital stabilization, so it's basically 42-odd percent. So it's a financial policy that the council enacts, and after this, the general stabilization balance should be, with all pending motions, about $2.38 million.
Any questions or comments from the councils? Any questions or comments from the general public? Hearing none, I'll close out that public hearing. Third public hearing. Town Council to vote to transfer $756,942.60 from free cash to the General Stabilization Fund. Counsel LaTieri.
Again, Finance Committee met this evening. This is another financial policy from the council, from the same date as the other financial policy, and this stipulates that the Town Council will put 30% of all certified free cash into the General Stabilization Fund. Pending this motion, the fund should have a balance of roughly $2.39 million.
Any questions by the council? Comments from the general public? Hearing none, we'll close out that public hearing. Town Council to vote to transfer $145,000 from the General Stabilization Fund to the Fire Department Fund FY '19 collective bargaining. Counsel LaTieri.
Finance Committee met this evening on this. This was a, this is cleaning up some items from fiscal '19, and there was, after the books were closed out, there was a shortage of $145,000 in that line item, as there were in several smaller amounts in other various funds. So we did vote unanimously to transfer the $145,000 from General Stabilization to the Fire Department to fund that fiscal year '19 collective bargaining. And the balances, I said before, reflect this amount being authorized.
Questions from the council? Comments from the council? Questions or comments from the general public? Hearing none, close out that. Town Council to vote to transfer $86,956.82 from free cash to the Building Stabilization Fund. Counsel LaTieri.
Again, coming out of finance this evening, this is another policy that the council had initiated several years back, and this is roughly, this is, this could be up to 10% of free cash, but we did, we have in the past capped the Building Stabilization Fund to $300,000. So this $86,000, if approved, will bring us to that $300,000 threshold.
Comments or questions from the council?
They did have unanimous recommendation.
Unanimous. Hearing none, general public. Hearing none, close out that. Town Council to vote to transfer $35,000 from the Town Council Reserve to the General Fund Article FY '14 Derelict Properties. Counsel LaTieri.
This is a special article that was established about five years ago, and this is for our council to maintain. There have been several properties over the years that have been put back on the tax rolls because of this fund that we established. It is, right now, an unfunded fund that we are looking to change in fiscal year '20 and have new policies in effect, so we won't have to do these transfers mid-year. But this was voted, not voted, but this was recommended to the council with positive recommendation.
Questions or comments from the council? Hearing none from the general public? Hearing none, we'll close out the public hearing. Public comment? Hearing none. Correspondence, none. Committee reports. Vice President LaTieri.
So the Finance Committee, as we've said several times in the last 10 minutes, met earlier this evening. Present were committee members Counsel Christopher, Counsel Farino, and myself. Also, Town Manager Faizan, CFO Friedman, and Counsel-elect Steve Vergari was also present. We had several items on the agenda. The meeting lasted about 55 minutes. We had nine items, to be precise, on the agenda. Eight of them, which we will go over, passed with unanimous approval, and one of them is coming out of committee without recommendation, which we will discuss in old business. Miller Field met last evening. If I can move on, Counsel President.
Sure.
Miller Field met last evening at the high school. Again, the vocational students are doing a great job. It is going on as best we can. The few remaining items we have, the floors in the bathroom have to be finished, which they're concrete floors, which are just being polished out, and then the partitions for the bathrooms and the stalls will be put in. They are on-site and waiting to be put in. The only items we're waiting for are windows for the concession stand, and just making sure that everything's proper, handicap accessible, and meets all the requirements. We have some fencing to put in, and other than that, we are on track. We have tentatively have an April 2nd grand opening date, which would coincide with the beginning of the spring sports season for the high school. So that is tentative right now, but we feel that that is a pretty positive date. Other than that, that is all we have from Miller Field.
Thank you. Town Managers report.
Sure. So I'm going to try to keep it brief this time. I will be taking the department heads from the town to an offsite on December 17th concerning some in-house training that I believe is necessary to continue to foster a level of professionalism and compliance with modern employment laws. And we're also going to go through a pretty extensive goal-setting exercise that we were introduced to by Natasha Perez, who has trained a fair amount of state and municipal-level leaders around this area. This is the same type of goal-setting exercise that I look to do with you all on the council in January, so it will help inform the budget process as well. So that is something that is exciting, and I look forward to. The last time we were all together was the vote concerning the Center Business District map, and although there have been some communications about trying to be expedient in the process of zoning the middle school site, we are working with outside legal, the same outside legal counsel to make sure that we are moving forward in the most prudent and legal manner possible. We don't want to do something quickly and have it contested in court. So we are working diligently at that, and we will potentially have some options in the near future. And then, lastly, I brought up during the Finance Committee meeting concerning our negotiations, we are employing a new outside labor counsel. Liz Valerio is here. She represents the firm, VDH, and I'm not going to even try to say the names, but Liz comes to my professional organization to talk to us and train us on negotiating. She has discussed with me multiple times about the Joint Labor Management, JLMC, yeah, JLMC, and all these different sorts of things. But Liz is one of the preeminent attorneys in this field within the area, so I wanted to bring Liz here to introduce herself, and then also, this may, I'm trying to stress that this is very important to me going forward, and nothing will be getting by my office or the Finance Department either. We are employing counsel, in my mind, to rectify some of my mistakes of the past, but set a more professional path forward, and the CFO will also be more intimately involved in terms of the financial impacts of some of these things as well. So Liz, if you would like to, does anyone have any questions for Liz or anything like that?
Welcome to the party.
Liz will work very hard to keep us out of JLMC, so that's my biggest goal.
Well, if you get into the JLMC, we also have experience if you get there. We help her, that's what we do. We live for lots of municipalities across the state, cities and towns. We also represent school districts, neighborhood planning law. We help with grievances. We try to keep you out of arbitrations and litigation if we can. We try to work out resolutions, and we like to make sure that you know what everything costs before you say yes to it. We work as a team, so that, and I know that I've had a conversation with your chief the other day, if there's issues and one of us is here, for example, if there's an issue, there's someone at my office right now who will answer a question or pick up their cellphone. So there's a whole team approach to make sure that you always have somebody available for you.
So this has been very clear to me since before I came here, the need for increased compliance and reduction of liability, and this is a move in that direction in my mind. So I will continue to seek out how to reduce our risk that we have out there. Our insurer has made it very clear that the town needs to continue to train the individuals who work for the town, as well as set up some legal parameters and get good legal advice when we do kind of encounter some issues along the way.
What is the name of your firm?
Valerio, Domanello, and Hillman. I'm the Valerio.
Valerio.
Domanello.
Domanello.
And Hillman.
And Hillman. Where are you located?
We are located on the Westward Dedham Line on University Avenue, which is a very short drive from here, actually.
Great. And you're going to be our full legal counsel? Are we getting rid of cap page?
Nope, just for.
No, no, we do labor.
Just for labor.
Okay.
Any other questions? I'll come aboard.
Counsel Christopher.
I'm sorry.
Not about the labor counsel, but I know, I know that the direction of the council's going with the zoning in the Center Business District, but I think it's going to be difficult, or I think that the two areas, the middle school site and the CBD, as it's zoned right now, need to interact with one another. And I know, also know that there's a lot of people in the community who have proposed changes, petitions that have come forward, and I think that as a town, we need to look at that holistically, you know, and look into how those two sites are going to interact with one another, the zoning at the CBD and the middle school as well. And I hope that we can, and I don't know if the Planning Board has met on this yet, but I'd hope that we also take those people's issues with the CBD zoning into account, and if there are any resources that we could provide to the Planning Board in coming to an end where those two things, you know, complement each other, I'd hope that we would be going in that direction, because I know we are going to be making some decisions about, about those petitions that had come forward, and I don't want to just throw them, throw them away and say, you know, the CBD's done and that's all. I think that that's something that we do need to look at, and I hope that the Planning Board can be cognizant of that as they look to make those changes.
Absolutely. And that's something I neglected to mention. So in my present, the FFO forum, I talked about win 2030. MAPZ just presented us with potential costs and a timeline. Wendy Millar, as stated in that meeting, has experience with this and all of the work that she did with Last Stop Revere, so she will be involved with this as well. That will be part of this, the visioning process is to bring as many people in as possible to talk about some of the metrics, but that should then set the table for a master planning process. And in a master planning process, you don't leave neighborhoods out of it. Even if you've set the zoning recently, even the, by that point, the resilient zoning language should most likely be in our hands, but we should even be looking at that as part of a master planning process, as a master planning process, because we need to holistically look at the entire town and not just neighborhood by neighborhood. And I, that's something that's kind of hit me, is that the Center Business District has gotten, has dominated attention since I've been here, and there are other business districts in town, and there are other places where people congregate, and I want to make sure that as many people as possible feel involved. So that will be part of this entire process, but thank you for bringing that up.
Anything else?
No, all set. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Under old business, we have a lot of housekeeping articles, all finance, so at this point in time, I'll turn it over to Vice President LaTieri.
Thank you, Counsel President. Thank you. First motion I'd like to make is that the Town Council vote to transfer $1,174,614.18 from free cash to Capital Stabilization Fund in accordance with Town Council policy or take any other action relative thereto. This did come out of finance with positive recommendation.
Any discussion on the motion?
Did it come, it came up with a unanimous vote?
It did.
Okay.
And it would require a roll call vote.
No further discussion?
Counsel Ringman. Counsel Callum.
Yes.
Counsel Christopher.
Yes.
Counsel Boncory.
Yes.
Counsel Farino.
Yes.
Counsel DiMarco.
Yes.
Counsel LaConti.
Yes.
Vice President LaTieri.
Yes.
President Beckham.
Yes.
Counsel President, I move that the Town Council vote to transfer $756,942.60 from free cash to General Stabilization Fund in accordance with the Town Council policy or take any other action relative thereto. This did come out of finance with positive recommendation. This is part of the council financial policy, which provides 30% of free cash, of available, certified free cash go to the General Stabilization Fund.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Counsel Ringman. Counsel Callum.
Yes.
Counsel Christopher.
Yes.
Counsel Boncory.
Yes.
Counsel Farino.
Yes.
Counsel DiMarco.
Yes.
Counsel LaConti.
Yes.
Vice President LaTieri.
Yes.
President Beckham.
Yes.
Counsel President, I move that the Town Council vote to transfer $145,000 from General Stabilization Fund to Fire Department Budget to cover costs associated with fiscal '19 collective bargaining agreement or take any other action relative thereto. This did come out of finance with positive recommendation. Roll call vote.
Counsel Ringman. Counsel Callum.
Yes.
Counsel Christopher.
Yes.
Counsel Boncory.
Yes.
Counsel Farino.
Yes.
Counsel DiMarco.
Yes.
Counsel LaConti.
Yes.
Vice President LaTieri.
Yes.
President Beckham.
Yes.
Counsel President, I move that the Town Council vote to transfer $86,956.82 from free cash to Building Stabilization in accordance with the Town Council policy or take any other action relative thereto. This is, as stated before, another council policy where up to 10% of available, of certified free cash goes into Building Stabilization. This account is capped at $300,000 and is at $300,000 now. It came out with positive recommendation. Ask for a roll call vote.
Counsel Ringman. Counsel Callum.
Yes.
Counsel Christopher.
Yes.
Counsel Boncory.
Yes.
Counsel Farino.
Yes.
Counsel DiMarco.
Yes.
Counsel LaConti.
Yes.
Vice President LaTieri.
Yes.
President Beckham.
Yes.
Counsel President, I move that the Town Council vote to transfer $35,000 from Town Council Reserve to replenish the General Fund Article fiscal year 14 Derelict Properties for maintenance of Derelict Properties or take any other action relative thereto. Counsel President, this did also come out of finance with a positive recommendation.
Roll call vote.
Counsel Ringman. Counsel Callum.
Yes.
Counsel Christopher.
Yes.
Counsel Boncory.
Yes.
Counsel Farino.
Yes.
Counsel DiMarco.
Yes.
Counsel LaConti.
Yes.
Vice President LaTieri.
Yes.
President Beckham.
Yes.
Counsel President, I move that the Town Council vote to transfer $30,000 from Building Maintenance Stabilization Fund to General Fund Special Article Number 0196058-5881XX, fiscal year '20 ATC, water heater replacement, or take any other action relative thereto. This did come out of finance with positive recommendation, but if there's any confusion out there, we did vote this at the, at our last meeting as an emergency motion, but we did not have the six votes necessary because of the attendance, so we just want to make sure we're crossing our i's and crossing our t's and dotting our i's and doing it properly. So I would ask for a roll call vote.
Counsel Ringman. Counsel Callum.
Yes.
Counsel Christopher.
Yes.
Counsel Boncory.
Yes.
Counsel Farino.
Yes.
Counsel DiMarco.
Yes.
Counsel LaConti.
Yes.
Vice President LaTieri.
Yes.
President Beckham.
Yes.
Two-thirds of the vote passes.
Counsel President, I move that the Town Council vote to transfer $20,000 from Town Council Reserve to replenish the General Fund Article Pest Control as estimated for the remainder of fiscal year '20 or take any other action relative thereto. This did come out of finance with a positive recommendation. This is a, another unfunded item that we have, but obviously feel it's very important for the town that we maintain everything in good standing, so it did come out with positive recommendation.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Counsel President, I move that the Town Council vote to transfer $5,500 from Town Council Reserve Number 0111057-578100 to Town Manager General Office Supplies Number 0111254542300 for the purpose of funding Employee Recognition Program and Presentation for fiscal year 2020 or take any other action relative thereto. Counsel President, this was discussed in committee. This is a policy that, I guess I don't want to call it a policy, this has been in effect for about four years, it was started by a previous Town Manager. It constitutes a holiday party and recognition program for Town employees. There was much discussion on this relative to cost and if it was the right time to do something like this and spend the town's money when there are other departments that fund their own holiday parties and such. So it did, we did want it to come to the council for, to be read by the council and discussed, but we came out of finance with no recommendation.
I'll second the motion since there's no recommendation.
Okay.
From the council.
The motion's been seconded. Any discussion on the motion?
Discussion?
No discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Counsel President, I move that the Town Council vote to authorize unpaid bills of a prior year to be paid from current departmental budgets as noted below or take any other action relative thereto. There are six items. They are items from Inspection Services for water testing of $425, Inspection Services Department for extermination, page exterminating for $1,900, Veteran Services for Office Supplies of $35.38, Town Manager for Public Relations, $249, and Town Manager for mapping packages for Planning Board of $790, $86.50, and one from the COA Council on Aging for National Grid for $735.85. This total amount is $4,131.73. These are not transfers, these are covered in their current operating budgets for each department, so they're not requesting a transfer, we're just, we're just requesting that we clean up unpaid bills. It did come out of finance with positive recommendation. Any questions?
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Counsel LaTieri. Under new business, we've already voted on the tax classification, item number 17, Amendment Town Ordinance 10-12.90, right turns prohibited on certain intersections. Motion to refer to rules and ordinances.
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Town Council vote to use the retained earnings, Harbor Master Water weighs $89,380 to purchase seven, is that seven? Equipment.
I think it's supposed to be purchase slash equip.
Okay. Equipment and replacement, Boston Whaler. Motion to refer to finance.
Motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Town Council vote to transfer $49,000 from salary reserve to department budgets, seven enterprise funds as needed. Fiscal FY '20, costs associated with the 2% cost of living adjustment, COLA for non-union employees, other relevant FY '20 salary adjustment. Motion refer to finance.
Motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? There's none. Town Council vote to transfer $43,900 from salary reserve to the Fire Department for the purposes of funding the annualized FY '20 costs of the FY '19 negotiated union contract. Motion to refer to finance.
Motion.
Town Council vote to transfer $43,900 from salary reserve to the fire department for the purposes of funding the annualized FY '20 cost of the FY '19 negotiated union contract. Motion to refer to finance.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Town Council transfer $40,000 from free cash to DPW repair maintenance of infrastructure account. Motion to refer to finance.
Motion.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Town Council vote to transfer $16,900 from salary reserve budgets, department budgets and enterprise funds, FY '20 cost associated with FY '19 clerical union agreement.
Motion.
Motion to refer?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Town Council vote to transfer $10,000 from the Town Council Reserve to the Town Manager Training Services. Motion to refer to finance.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Public.
Yes, sir. Could I just go back for one second? I forgot, I was getting ready for financing. Anything, I know a couple meetings ago we discussed the input hazards committee, that we were going to keep on that and maintain a good relationship. Have we gone anywhere with that yet?
So Mr. Falbo wrote me a letter concerning some of the input that came from that night, and I have been in contact with Mike Valalaro at this airport and trying to get a good introductory meeting with the new president of Massport. So I am working on that. That said, we just received communications as of, this was the day before Thanksgiving, and I sent it to, this morning, to Council President Beckia and Council President-elect Boncory, concerning some legal interpretations of some of the things that were said at that meeting. Massport and the FAA and local-level people are very aware of what was referred to as a PFC charge, and if we could utilize that in terms of soundproofing. There are some legal opinions on that, as well as who then could potentially be eligible on it. So I am just trying to figure out the best, most effective way to communicate that information with all of you, and then we can disseminate some of it to the public. The only issue that comes in is that it kind of cuts both ways. It seems like much of Massport is very much, and the FAA is under the impression that whoever has had soundproofing done to their property previously is ineligible for any future money. That's said multiple times in it, specifically from November 14th. There's some responses. So I'm trying, it's a bunch of documents, I'm trying to figure out the best way to summarize it for all of you. But it is the, you could use this PFC for soundproofing-related things potentially, but they think that everyone that could get soundproofing has gotten soundproofing in Winthrop. So we're dealing with the same kind of place that we were before, unfortunately. So I know the lawyer who did some of the work on behalf of Massport on it, so I want to reach out to her to get some better understanding of it, because it's pretty complicated what they said. So there is a potential funding source. I don't know if they're going to be willing to use it for that.
I would just ask them if, I mean, I'm sure technology has changed over the last 25 years since they started, 30 years since they started the soundproofing, and I really think, I hope that we can work our way around that.
That, and yes, and that is my initial viewpoint on it, is that just like the cars we drive or the phones we use or anything like that has changed dramatically in 25, 30 years, this technology has changed as well. So we're trying to, I'll summarize it, and then we can choose as a group what our next plan of action could be, because I think it is effective to have the council and my office communicating with these larger entities and not just my office.
I think the key to it is the FAA. They're really the key. They're the ones that say you can't, you can't re-soundproof.
Yep.
Even if it's 35 years old.
And rather than.
If they, if they start from scratch, they send a team out there and they actually monitor the house.
Yep.
You know, for several weeks to see if it qualifies.
And they talked, honestly, that, this letter, and I'll, first pass, I'll probably pass everything on to you all. I'll try to summarize it a little bit better, so you don't have to go through hundreds of pages of things. The points that were made in this room are the same points in this documentation about the levels over the year with all of the readings and how it's divided by 365, so it doesn't really matter if it's day or night type of thing, what the acceptable levels are, what uninhabitable areas are. It's a lot of the stuff that they said here, the 65 versus the 70, those types of things, it's all in this information as well. So they are speaking the same language that our impetus hazers committee has been working on. I'll give it to you, and then we can figure out as a group the direction you all would like to pursue.
And just one more thing, I just want to thank Steve Calhoun, DPW. I mean, that was not a freak storm, but you usually don't get six inches of snow in the beginning of December, so.
It hit here a lot harder than anyone expected it to, and they were working last night a lot, and they were working way later today than anyone expected. We had intended for them to have things relatively cleaned up by 10, and the storm moving offshore at 12, so they would just clean up behind it. It didn't stop snowing here until 3:00. So Steve Calhoun's not here because he needs to sleep at some point during his life, so they did a good job, and we always commend DPW in these types of things, because they help us get out of our houses and be able to move around our communities.
Thank you.
Would you anticipate getting that Massport information to everybody?
I will get it to you all before the next meeting.
Okay.
Do you want to say anything?
We'll talk about it.
Okay. Not a problem.
Anyone else? Public comment? Yes?
Hi. I have a question about the middle school.
Can you state your name, please?
Marissa de Bonzunisca, Johnson Ave, in Winter Park, obviously. So I understand that Wendy Millar was putting together a meeting last month. A couple of us had missed it, and it was about fixing that building. Is that true?
Mm-hmm.
So that building, obviously, is now not occupied. There's no children in that school. There are a new middle school, high school for a reason. Part of that reason was reports from the DPH, we'll go back, what, four years or so, back in 2015. My question is, if that building is still owned by the town, or if it's going to be leased out to someone else, are they going to be knowing the facts of the situation, having coria quality, having hold of the building, or are they going to be in the dark about it? When you sell something, you lease something, full disclosure should be to the person.
We would absolutely disclose any of that information if we were to put it out to bid for a developer to take it over. No, we're not, yeah, we wouldn't hide that information at all. Yeah, we're not going to sell an unhealthy building to someone and not let them know that it's unhealthy.
Not.
Anyone else wish to be heard? Hearing none. Any public relations from councilors?